Okay, good morning, everybody. This, the January 27 recess meeting of the Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. I believe we will proceed directly to the business of the day, which is beach nourishment financing. Greg, I know that you have some introductory comments, but if I may, I'd like to take the liberty of framing this discussion a little bit, which is to say, you know, beach nourishment is one of the most important things that the town does, and it's important that we have a sustainable way of doing this for as far in the future as we can arrange for that to be. And we've relied on ourselves and Dare County to do this. Dare County has signaled by some of its recent actions that, you know, that the same degree of funding is not perhaps as set in stone as we all might have thought in the past, and that we need a sustainable system for doing this and continuing to be self-reliant. We can appeal to the state, we can appeal to the county, but we are going to have to continue to carry a large share of this ourselves for the foreseeable future. And right now, we're relying solely on the oceanfront. So in this discussion, after today, I would hope that we have a framework for a more sustainable system for financing beach nourishment, for spreading the financial load a little more broadly, whether that's by additional service districts and where they are and what configuration they have. Without getting into the numbers, we don't want to all be beating on calculators trying to figure out exact numbers, but that we want a consensus for a system, a picture, if you will, for how we do this, that can include service districts, can include a broader share being carried by the full town. And then part two is what do we do with this most immediate coming up, coming project? And what is in the town's best interest in terms of the scale? Yeah, I understand there's a cost issue with that as well that the board will debate, but you know, I think perhaps the broader question in that is what is the wisest course of action among the choices that we have? And I'll ask the board if anybody thinks differently of what we should be doing today, please, please say so. And hearing none, Greg, I'll turn it to you.
Well, thank you, Mary. Right, you teed that up very well. So certainly at this point, we've provided a great deal of information to the board, right? And in terms of projects and project alternatives, financing, the MSDs, and we really want to try to make sure that we first kind of focus on these two project alternatives, because I think depending on which project you choose, that determines the financing and the MSD So I think from, just from that standpoint, David Ryan and our consultants are going to go over these two project alternatives. Amy Miller will hone in on the financial aspect, and Andy will assist in that as well, and really hopefully help kind of guide the board with both the project and financing alternatives for your discussion to, so that we can really move forward and continue to move forward in a timely basis. So I guess with that, we can, we can go to David.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners. So Brian Joyner from Maffinickel, the consulting engineers that are assisting the town with the development of the Post Dorian project, he's going to tag team this presentation with me. And to honor your time, we'll try to keep it very brief and short and give you the relevant and updated information that you need in order to make an informed decision on which alternative is preferred in moving forward for this project. So just very briefly, the presentation outline, just going to do a quick review of the Hurricane Dorian losses, talk about the constraints from the FEMA public assistance and coastal storm damage mitigation grant. There are some timelines that are associated with that. And we wanted to make sure that that was clear as to how those constraints affect the schedule for the project. And then as far as the planning objectives, there's some goals that we're trying to achieve. Look at different volume options. There are some assumptions that we make along the way for these various options, and wanted to make sure that that was clear, that there were still some unknowns, and there are some educated guesses that we are making that go along with this. And then there are some cost estimates that we have prepared for each option, the schedule, and then additional work that may be required as part of the project planning. And then at, at the end, as Greg had indicated, there will be a funding and MSD discussion, which is going to pair with the planning side in order to try to provide staff some additional guidance on what the preferred alternative is moving forward. Very quickly, this was presented previously. This slide encompasses by reach, the erosion losses in each one of the reaches from Hurricane Dorian. Overall, about 11 cubic yards per foot was lost over the entirety of the project. So along the way, the town was able to apply for a coastal storm damage mitigation grant that was awarded back in October for approximately $1.4 million. And what we had been focusing on is looking how we can supplement the FEMA project with the coastal storm damage mitigation grant. And in review of the FEMA guidance that has been provided so far, which has changed from what was previously presented back in December to what is being presented now, I think we've come up with some refined numbers that captured the FEMA information in order to determine what we could see as far as a projected volume for that project. A couple of things I wanted to highlight is that the CSDM application, when we originally submitted for that, it was for a maximum award amount of $2.4 million. So we are going to be required to go back and refine that application prior to executing a contract with the state for those grant funds. The initial period for that grant is 24 months from the time of contract execution, and there is an ability to extend that an additional 12 months as needed for a total timeframe of 36 months. Now, the FEMA public assistance criteria, we have been coordinating directly with the beach specialist to talk about the particulars of the two alternatives. If we do this, then what are the implications from the FEMA side? So we've had numerous conversations, asked a multitude of questions in order to try to get as many answers upfront as possible. What we know at this time is that the FEMA reimbursement will be based upon actual costs. The timeframe for the FEMA, for the FEMA work is referenced from the initial period from when the declaration was. And so that declaration date is October 18th of 2020. So from 18 months beyond that, that is the time, the initial time period that FEMA gives applicants to conduct the project. And as needed, there can be an additional 18 months on top of that in order for us to conduct the work. Presently, we are well within that initial 18-month time period, and I think that initial 18 months will be up here in April of 2021. So we will be submitting a written request for a time extension for that. So that, that total is, is three years to go ahead and conduct the work. If it takes us longer, and the criteria that is used is if it's beyond the applicant's control, then we can go ahead and extend that out as far as necessary. That's, there's some discretion that is used by FEMA, but right now, they've had projects that have been gone, ongoing for five to six years. So if we come across a situation where the circumstances are beyond our control, that could be due to permitting, that could be due to FEMA review, then we can put in supplemental requests for additional time. And then beyond the three years, it's, it's really up to FEMA's discretion on how long they will permit us to go ahead and carry that out. It seems based upon existing projects, that, that amount of time, that they're very flexible with that. Another key point that I wanted to cover was how they look at costs. If we were just looking at a FEMA-only project, they would be covering 100% of the actual cost of the project. Once you start supplementing that FEMA project with additional sand, they look at a prorata cost distribution. And so this prorata is a function of the amount of sand that you add on to the project, and then basically, the percentage of that sand that is added is then multiplied against all the costs for the project. So this, this approach works a little bit differently than how the project was handled back during post Matthew and for 2019 project, is that we had a scheduled maintenance project, and FEMA was able to supplement those funds, and they were able to pay down on some of the fixed costs that the town had for their project. In this application, it would be working in reverse, in the fact that we have a FEMA project soon after the completion of a town maintenance project. And so the, the federal funds, they would receive a greater benefit since the additional sand that is added actually pays down on some of their fixed costs. And so I just wanted to highlight that, is that for this, as we look at these alternatives, this is very key as to how these costs are configured and how much the town share is going to be when all those costs are total. One other thing I just wanted to mention, that the application was made back in January of 2020. It's currently in process with an environmental review, and that environmental review should be finished up in the April or May timeframe of 2022. Once that review is completed, then it goes through a separate process for obligation of funds. The, the proposal of adding sand onto the FEMA project will require additional environmental review, but that will not hold up the review that is currently in process. And so they will track separately and parallel, but should not impact the overall schedule of either one of the alternatives that is currently being presented here today. I think at this point, I'm going to pass it over to Brian Joyner. He's going to take you through the next couple of slides as far as the planning process and some of the goals that we are looking to achieve with this project.
Thanks, David. Good morning, everyone. The slide here is, is one we've, we've presented before. We talked about this back in December, and just to summarize again, some of the goals and objectives of thinking about a project that is bigger or longer than, not longer, but more volume than the, what you could do with just the FEMA and the CSDM funds. They're trying to do a larger sized project. There's a few reasons why you might do that. One is to try to achieve a more economically efficient placement template, dredging template from sand on the beach. We know from, you know, contractors' experience that it costs more to place a smaller amount per linear foot. So if you're placing five or 10 yards per linear foot, there's difficulties in that and wastage, wastage of some of the sand, it's just hard to control the sand, and so they charge more per, per cubic yard for that. But if you can get up in the range of 20 to 25 cubic yards per foot or more, then those, those inefficiencies mostly go away, and the unit price can be better. So if they're trying to compete with each other, you should come out with a better unit price with a bigger project like that. As David mentioned, the, the size of project that you could do with FEMA and CSDM, if you just averaged it out over the whole town, oceanfront, would be on the order of 11 cubic yards per foot, so you would have some of those inefficiencies in. A second reason to try to do more sand sooner than later would be to, if you want to maintain those efficiencies, then maybe the volume of the project should, should be matched to being able to extend the project life to 2027, 28, to try to match up with the third bullet or the fourth bullet on the screen, which would kind of let you align more with the other northern towns' project maintenance cycle and possibly combine contracting with, with them. So there's a few things working together that lend toward, that support, or at least give advantage to doing a bigger nourishment project now, instead of just sticking with the FEMA and CSDM volumes. So some of these things we've discussed, some of the things are not necessarily driving the two alternatives we'll present today. I mean, David's been over one, there's another alternative that has a larger volume of 1.4 million yards. Not that both those projects absolutely meet all these goals, but these are some of the things we talked about with trying to extend the project size. So if we go to the next slide, give a little background on how we came up with the 1.4 or 1.472 million cubic yards as the larger, if we're doing a larger nourishment project as that size being approximately the right number. Is that we looked at the background erosion rates that we've got from the data all the way through this past summer's annual monitoring, and that indicates the, the background, just the normal everyday gluteral processes, storms included, things like that that go on year to year. The table shows what we found reach by reach, that it's a smaller number, about three and a half cubic yards per foot every year in reach one, 26 and a half cubic yards per foot per year in reach four, and then something between those varying along the beach and the other reaches, which comes up with a total, though again, the total isn't, isn't the full story, of about 408, 409,000 cubic yards per year of erosion just each year in the project area. If we wanted to sort of aggregate that into a three-year project life, so extending, extending from, from trying to get, extending, trying to get through, say, a 2027, 2028 renourishment, you would need approximately 1.472 million cubic yards to sort of account for that background erosion rate. And if we split that out, that would get us that 27.9 cubic yards per foot over the whole length of the project, which would be greater than the 20 to 25 cubic yards efficiency threshold. Again, though, just averaging out over the whole length isn't the full story. If we did even that average of 27 cubic yards per foot, you know, reach one, we'd get a lot of sand and have a longer project life. Reach four may not actually get to 2027, 28. So then we did a second pass. I think if we go to the next slide, it should be there. Okay, no, it's actually not on the slide, so David, go back one. So the, I didn't put the table on there, and I apologize for that. So what we did, though, to make sure that each of the reaches would have a similar, or at least have a targeted longevity of getting to about 2027, 2028, is that we redistributed that, that volume, that 1.472 million cubic yards over the reaches, so that some reaches get more sand per cube, per foot, and some reaches get less sand per foot, but overall the beach performs well as a unit to meet that time threshold. So again, that's, that's sort of the logic behind the 1.472 million is meeting that 20 to 25 cubic yards per foot efficiency and having each of the reaches have a preferred or a targeted longevity. And then now the next slide, if we kind of summarize those into two different alternatives, alternative one, using just the volume of sand, the 570,000 approximately cubic yards that could be funded by the FEMA plus the CSDM funds. On this slide, we see the orange bars at the top indicate the losses due to Dorian in each reach, reach one on the left, reach four on the right, and the numbers at the top talk about the, the losses per foot of those, those values that were actually experienced and lost in Dorian. So in reach one, approximately five yards per foot were lost, and reach four on the right, about 38 cubic yards per foot were lost. So that plus, that was what was lost, taking the FEMA volume plus the CSDM grant, we believe you could do approximately 570,000 cubic yards. And if we distribute it, just scaled on volumes that were actually lost, like scaling it up and down the beach that way, we get an option one for distributing that sand. So you, one thing, what we're not showing on screen is just an equal distribution of sand, you know, that average of 10.8 cubic yards per foot across everywhere, because that's, it's not how it was lost, and it doesn't actually generate a, a particular longevity or anything like that, that is equal on the beach at all. But if we distribute the sand in the option one fill density, you see the light blue boxes of 4.4 cubic yards per foot in reach one, 10.4 in reach two, 17.7 in reach three, then 35 and 56 in reach three S and reach four. That's one way to do it, kind of scaling it out in how it was lost. And you can see the longevity is below that. If we did that, you know, that might, that sand might last about one and a half years in reach one, and maybe two years in reach four. So you've got longevity somewhere between one and a half and two years along the project length. That isn't the only way to do it, because if we go down to option two, the darker blue boxes, because the option one volume in reach one is so small, the 4.4 yards per foot, and then the unit cost per yard of doing that in reach one is much higher than the average of about 12 and a half. Doing that, I think, was around $20 a yard for each one in our estimate. Because it's such a small template, it would also actually even be kind of hard to see that on the beach in place as such a small volume per foot. So another way to do it would be to take the volume that would have gone into reach one and place it in other reaches. So place it down in reach three, and reach three north and reach three south, where it would do more good for extending the project life. So in option two, you would have no sand placed in reach one, some sand placed in reach two, three, and four. And in those reaches, the sand would last, we estimate, between one and a half and two years again. However, you would get just more, more overall cost efficiency. The project would get overall more cost efficiency by not having to place such a small volume in reach one per foot. I guess I should pause there and ask if there's any questions on that slide. There's a lot of numbers, and I've kind of been through a lot, so I'd like to open that up for question. All right, we're hearing none. That's alternative one, using the FEMA and CSDM money and not adding on volume beyond what those could fund. And the next slide, I think, shows alternative two of doing a larger project, and this is that 1.472 million cubic yard project. Again, distributing the sand, both the minimum cubic yard per foot of 20, 20 cubic yards per foot to get that efficiency threshold, and you can see that in reach one and reach two. In those two reaches, just doing that, getting above that number gets you about six years longevity in reach one, and about three years longevity in reach two. And then in the other reaches, you'd have to place more than 20 yards or foot to get a three-year, approximately three-year longevity, and that results in 45 yards a foot in reach three north, and then 75 each in reach three south and reach four. And the total of that, again, goes up to 1.472. So the value we see there is better unit prices, more competitive unit prices for the sand and greater project longevity over the entire beach for going ahead and doing that additional project on top of the FEMA and CSDM. Then I think we go to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about how we developed some unit costs. So, and we've done a little bit, we've got some other more detailed thoughts on this, and those details will continue to change as we get closer to bidding. But in general, we developed an opinion of what the mobilization, demobilization would be, and then the unit cost for dredging and placement on the beach, just based on recent projects in North Carolina that we've either been part of or gotten the bids from, the bid tabs from. We think the mob and demo is going to be approximately 5 million. More recent communications with our estimator indicated between 5, 5 and a half, depending on the year when it was done. We would focus on using the previously permitted bar areas, two, three, and 3A, that seem to have more remaining volume of better quality than bar area four, and using those three bar areas that are close together and closer to the southern end of the town. We believe a unit price of $12.5 a yard is certainly sufficient. There's indications it could be less than that, depending on the details of the project. That unit cost is based on the production rates and what we believe contractors generally require as far as daily revenue for the dredges that have conducted the Naxx, the island and Ellis Island. And again, it's developed by someone with a lot of years of familiarity with, with those particular dredges and how they work. Things that could improve the unit prices would be if we, one, having that greater than 20 yards per feet improve the unit price. We factored that into the number here. It could be, it could improve further with, if there's more sand available in the bar area and greater depth permitted to dredge in the bar areas, that lets the dredgers focus their work a bit more and makes them more comfortable that they're not going to have to work hard to find enough sand while continuing to meet the permit requirements. They like that extra flexibility and buffer in the volume. So going forward with additional permitting of the projects in future, keeping that in mind, could increase, could improve the unit prices. I think that's our basis for how we've come up with volumes and prices. And then David, I think you were gonna, I'd like to summarize some of the project details as far as town finances on the next slide.
Okay. All right. So just to go ahead and summarize what, what Brian had covered, alternative number one, we're looking at a project size of about 567,000 cubic yards of fill that would be added. This would be limited to just a FEMA and CSDM funds. The total estimated construction cost for that is $13.9 million. And Brian had presented two options with the distribution of that sand, and as he had mentioned, if we tried to apply that evenly over the length of the project, that you are not going to get the same longevity by reach. And so if we looked at reach four with an equal distribution of sand over the project length, you're only looking at about half a year that, in project longevity, and up to three years in reach one. And that's really a function of And that's really a function of that long-term erosion rate. As compared to alternative two, where we are looking to add sand in addition to that FEMA and CSDM amount up to 4.1.472 billion cubic yards. That's going to take additional town funding, county funding assistance for a total of 26.1 million cubic yards. It achieves that economical fill template that Brian had talked about in the northern reaches and looking at a minimum of extending the project as a whole up to three additional years. And so we're able to do that with this option with three years in reach four and then in reach one up to approximately six years. In your packet, we had provided two separate spreadsheets which analyzed all the associative costs that would go into each one of these alternatives. I'm not going to go into the details of those individual costs, but just wanted to provide a snapshot of how those costs would be distributed with the CSDM funds for alternative number one. That basically we've got the $1.4 million for CSDM that would be utilized. 744,000 would be applied toward sand, 663,000 would be applied towards shared cost. That would include mobilization and demobilization, which is one of the larger costs, as well as the engineering permitting and environmental costs associated with the project. As a, as a whole, we're looking at the $13.9 million, which FEMA funds are going to basically take care of about 90% of that total value of the project. There would be some town funds that would be expended with that, and that would primarily be sand fencing and sprigging, and then any financial related costs, which we've been told are not FEMA reimbursable. So that in total is about $480,000 dollars that the, the town would be responsible for. There were some assumptions. And again, going back to what was stated previously, that these costs are distributed based upon the prorated distribution, which is a function of the additional sand volume placed. And so in this case, it's basically approximately a 90-10 split between FEMA and those CSDM funds. There were some other assumptions that were made as far as the, what the town's cost share would be, the geotechnical work that would be required, and the amount of sand fence that would be installed. Alternative number two, which looks at the FEMA plus CSDM funds plus a town share that the town would be looking at adding up to 881,000 cubic yards. And those costs would be divided out between the $1.4 million for CSDM, 8.7 for FEMA, and then the town's cost share, approximately $16 million. And $11 million of that, or excuse me, $12 million approximately would go towards sand, and then $4 million would be shared cost for that placement of that additional sand. Again, there were some assumptions that were, were made that the larger volume would require some additional geotechnical work. And so that has been included within that cost breakdown. And again, there are some assumptions about the amount of sand fencing and sprigging that would be installed as well as the reimbursable costs. I'm going to pass it back to Brian at this point, and he's going to just walk you through the schedule for each one of these alternatives.
Thanks, David. So first of all, this, this is for the alternative one, the FEMA CSDM project with 2022 construction, so bidding, bidding later on this year and then constructing next summer in 2022. We don't have the data to prove it yet, but we believe that, well, we know there's enough sand left in the bar areas to do this project comfortably. The volume needed. And this schedule makes the assumption that DCM and the permitting would not require new geotechnical borings, new geotechnical data and sampling of our areas that, that we could show that there's areas that could be re-permitted without having to do the additional geotechnical. And that's more of a schedule driver as well, which I'll get to on the next slide. So the sort of favorable schedule for doing the smaller project in 2022 starts, well, it, it's underway, but it basically has the, the permit package being prepared on the third line of the schedule has the permit being prepared mid-February to the end of March and submitted at the end of March. Before that, on the second line of the schedule, it would be the town and Moffett Nickel coordinating with DCM on some findings from the borough area hydrographic survey that's been completed. We, we just got the data for that yesterday and we'll be evaluating that this week. So we'll coordinate with them soon through, through the middle of February. Then on the third line, we'd be preparing the permit package to submit by the end of March. We're assuming about a six-month permit review timetable, which is that fourth line in the schedule between April and September. And then while that permitting is going on and we're designing the project in the background, a key, couple of key milestones. One, we've targeted, we've put a circle as a milestone for permit issuance at the end of September. But before that, say in the summer, June, July, we believe it would be good to have an industry day with the dredgers to let them know the project is coming. It'll be, it'll be bidding. You know, we'll have a better sense of when the bid would come out, so we could let them know that and get some of their feedback on how the project is designed and answer some of their questions, get them comfortable with it. And in this schedule, it looks to advertise the project for bid a bit before the actual permit is issued. But after long enough in the permitting process, that milestone at the end of August, that we would have a sense of what's going to be in the permit. We should know by that point if there's any particular environmental requirements or permit requirements that need to be built into the bid. The project then would be bid in September with bids due middle to late October. And this, doing it on the schedule seems to be, give you plenty of room to select a contractor or award a contract to the parent with bidder, negotiate anything that needs to be negotiated, get a contract in place by December, maybe in January, then give notice to proceed in late winter, early spring, summer construction. So it's a, it's a comfortable timeframe for the bidders to know about it, to bid on it and get under contract before the dredging season starts. And then we're looking at maybe a, a three-month, three to four-month construction period at the end of the, or in, in summer 2022. So that's the, the smaller, the 570,000 yard or so FEMA CSDM project. If we go to the next slide for the larger project, and this looks at the, the, the difference, at the end of the day, the difference in this schedule is that it looks at construction potentially still in summer 2022, but possibly allowing for summer 2023 construction, both to, to account for some of the schedule tightness in this particular one, and also potentially to get more favorable bids. If you give the dredgers a longer performance timeframe, they can, they can be a little more creative with their bid price. So in this one, the, the concept is the same, except at the beginning of the schedule, second line, pre-app coordination with DCM is still the same. We'd be coordinating with them now through the middle to end of February. But this one assumes that for the larger, for the larger project, the 1.472 million yard project, that new, new borings, new geotechnical investigations of the bar areas and lab testing would probably be required, because we probably need to go a bit deeper in the bar areas. Or at least we'd be getting very close to the bottom of some of the permitted bar areas. So this makes an assumption that DCM would probably require a new geotech to do that, and the new geotech adds about three, three and a half months to the schedule. And you can see on the line, three authorized new geotech, that would be discussion with you, discussion between town staff, Moffett Nickel and, and, and board on when and if, if and when and how to authorize the, the new field investigations. We believe Athena could get out into the field to start working on the investigations mid to late March. And it would take them a couple of months to get the data weather dependent. We'd have the data in hand in June. We'd be preparing the permit package and then submitting it in the middle of July, we think. Again, a six-month permit review period. And actually, after the permit review period starts here, the next several lines are the same as the previous slide, having an industry day a few, a couple of months before permits issued, bidding the project a month or so before the permit comes out, again, knowing, believing, knowing that, that the conditions that would be in it to include in the bid as much as possible. But doing this has award and contract in early 2022. So say bid February 2022, having the bids come in and the low bidder be selected. Contracting goes on for a month or two with the, the goal to issue a notice to proceed probably late April to mid-May. For a sometime in the summer dredging, the larger project volume would take longer most likely to construct. So more like four months to construct, possibly maybe five. That puts it tight into the dredging season of summer 2022. So we think it's, it's at least a consideration to think about allowing a summer 2022 slash summer 2023 performance period. And, and some of the schedule could change to make it more favorable for 22, but this is our sort of best, best projection at the moment as to how the schedule could play out for the larger project. Maybe that's, that's all I had for this slide. Okay. A little bit of a summary of the field investigations, the things that are going on to support permitting. The, the first set, the bar area hydrographic survey, that's already been authorized by the board. The, the survey has been completed. The data came into us yesterday, so we're starting to analyze that. It shouldn't take us very long to understand what that's going to tell us. The purpose of that was to sort of talk to DCM again, satisfy their concerns, or at least address their concerns about whether the previous bar areas have filled in much since the last time they were dredged. And then if they did fill in quite a lot, then they would need some characterization of, well, is that sediment still beach quality? Is it fines? Is it, what is it? So the first pass is to see if there's been a lot of infill or not. We should know that fairly soon, based on the data that came to us. The second set, bar area geotechnical borings, that's what I just discussed, that to re-permit the bar areas, especially for a larger project, and certainly to go deeper, to, to take the permit depth deeper to give just more buffer, the dredgers more comfort with the amount of volume they've got in any one spot for, for pricing. That would require new vibrocord borings, new laboratory analysis, new reporting. And that is discussed that we think that's about a three-month, three, three and a half month process. And then the final one is sort of a parallel path, the DCM has acquired some investigations of, you know, larger sediment sizes, you know, large shell fragments, larger green sizes. Some, some understanding of what those are on the, on the beach now, so that projects can be compared to that and, and held to that. The, the town has applied for and, and obtained a grant for about 14,000 to, to support that. And then we are, Moffett and Nickel has been authorized by y'all to, to go out and actually do that survey on the beach and tally those numbers and report those back to DCM. So that'll be going on in parallel with all those other things. And that's not, that, I don't think that's a, a schedule critical path item as much as the geotech is. Next slide.
And I think at, at this point, we'll just go ahead and summarize everything that has been discussed for the two alternatives. We've got alternative number one, 567,000 cubic yards versus alternative number two, 1.472 million cubic yards. Alternative one just considers FEMA plus CSDM. Alternative two, FEMA plus CSDM plus a town portion. The difference in cost to the town is 480,000 for alternative one as compared to potentially $16 million in total for alternative two. Amy will discuss the breakdown of town share and potential county share for that option as part of the finance discussion. And then the individual breakdowns of the placement of sand. And then the scheduling, as Brian had just talked about, FEMA plus CSDM project, looking at summer 2022. Alternative number two could either be a summer 22 window or a summer 23 window, depending on how that schedule plays out. So at this point, we wanted to go ahead and open any questions that the board may have regarding the information that's been presented. You may want to hold off until you hear some of the financial part, because this ties directly into that. And, and so we're available to go ahead and answer any questions that you may have.
This, this has been David. I, I'd like to thank y'all. That seemed pretty clear to me. I think for any citizen watching, they should have been able to follow that and understand the difference between the two alternatives. And so yes, we'll ask if the board members have any questions at this point. Hearing none, I would suggest then that we proceed with Amy and the little bit about the financing.
Sure. Good morning. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. I'm, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, so I want to, I, I won't read from the memo or the slides, but just for anybody watching that might have not seen the packet. Can y'all see that? Um. Can everybody see that okay?
I don't see anything, Amy.
Uh-oh. Y'all can't see anything?
Nope.
Uh-oh.
No shared screen, sorry.
Okay, well.
If it's a PowerPoint, you don't have to share it anyway.
Okay. You all can't see anything right now? Can you see me?
Just you, Amy.
Okay, great. Well, then I will go ahead and go over this memo really quickly. I just wanted to, again, I won't read it. I'm just going to go over some of the important points. First of all, we talk about, you know, board guidance and creating MSDs. Right now, there are two MSDs. And, you know, after I talked to John Lighty, it's important to note that we should not, you know, we need to keep those. So essentially, by creating four more MSDs, we would have six. And the two that we current, currently have would overlap. As far as the boundaries of the MSDs would go, right now, of course, you know, Bonnet North, there is no, they're not in an MSD, so we could propose to have an east side and west side of Bonnet North. Okay. And that would be at the intersection of Wrightsville and Bonnet. Then Bonnet South to Gulf Stream on the west side of NC 12, it would be turning onto Bain Bridge and then onto Memorial. And then essentially, south of Jockey's Ridge, it would be on the, the west side, it would go to the bypass. And these east and west would be generally equidistant, and I believe they are, are within the area of ocean influence, which is about 1,000 feet from the ocean, give or take. So, you know, we, we want boards input on that, yes?
Excuse me, may I interrupt one second? Okay, on the map we got in our package, it appears that the proposed MSDs go to the bypass, not to the middle of Wrightsville, but the narrative talks about going to Wrightsville. So is the map wrong or is the narrative wrong? Or am I, or am I wrong?
No, you're you're correct, the map was what we used. Last year when we were talking about this and it does go to the bypass. And I was talking to Andy yesterday and he does have a map that. A GIS map that can kind of show the boundaries a little bit better. So, you know, board input is important as far as where you. Want those boundaries to be as well.
Okay, so so what you're talking about, the narrative part and the map we're provided. Don't juxtapose.
Right, but just for discussion purposes, I think it hopefully can give the board a feel for what those MSDs would add as far as valuation. And of course, you know, one of the slides talks about creating MSDs, the new MSDs, if that would be what the board wants in this in the calendar. For that and, you know, we would have a new map for you, so hopefully after today. If the board is interested in doing the MSDs, then we could, that would be something that we would want to talk about is is kind of honing in on those boundaries.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, again, I don't, I don't want to, you know, read from this memo, but. If we can create these new MSDs and not tax them. And I, you know, talked to John Lighty about that and his recommendation would would be. That we would just kind of need to be doing something, some supportive services towards the beach nourishment, which we, you know, clearly we are, so I think we're safe in that. Aspect. And again, you know, this all kind of feeds off of. The question of which project the board would like to do, would they want to do, you know, a FEMA and CSDM only project? Or. You know, add town funds to that. And so. Some of the, one thing I wanted to point out, which you may or may not have picked up from David's slides was that. FEMA kind of looks at this project. If if we add our own funds, town funds to this project. It's kind of the opposite of how it worked with Matthew is that they're looking at it as we're adding. Sand to their project, whereas with Matthew, it was. They were adding sand to our project, so you'll notice about a 3.3 million dollar decrease. And their contribution to the project. You know, if we add our own funds with that, so I just wanted to point that out and I'll point that out. In another slide as well, but regardless, we still will need to get financing, even if we don't. Contribute any funds, just because we need to pay for that float as far as getting reimbursed from the state and then FEMA does withhold that last 25%. Until the projects close out, which could be several months.
I see, who has a question?
Oh, okay. Sure.
Amy, I have a question for you. Correct me if I'm wrong, did I just hear you say that FEMA would lower their amount by 3.3 million dollars if we added sand?
Yes, they would, because they would be looking at it like. We're adding sand to their project. And so that we we would need to bear the cost of of that as well and and split the cost and essentially it's in the move and demo, so. Yes, they will be contributing about 3.3 million less if we add funds to it.
So does that change the numbers that we were presented on a slide for the cost of a 1.47 million dollar project?
No, I think David and Ryan, David, Ryan and I made sure those slides. Coordinated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um. And again, I just wanted to point out one more thing is that. You know, the sand placement for the FEMA only project. We can use engineering judgment from what FEMA has told us, meaning we could. Place it where we would need it most or where it would be most beneficial, not necessarily where it corresponds to the areas that the sand was lost. Um, and you know, our engineers can. You know, kind of define new reaches for us if they want, so I just wanted to point that out as well. Now we'll talk about the affordability. We have talked to our financial consultants about this. And I just wanted to point out that they have noted that if we did this project. We don't necessarily need to raise taxes. Now, that doesn't mean that it it puts us on the cusp of affordability. So just keep in mind that we're still paying for the 2019 project. And and there being. The MSDs are being taxed at 14.3 cents, so with the outstanding special obligation bonds that we already have. The coverage calculations for repayment. Drop before drop below the credit requirements of the banks. And we need to have, you know, a debt ratio to revenue ratio. And essentially, when we don't have enough revenue coming in. To pay off our debt, we have to dip into our fund balance. However, given our history with beach nourishment and our unique situation, they're working with the banks to kind of. Be okay with that. Again, any other unknowns? Any other storms, any unforeseen, you know, expenses that we don't know about right now? Could again, kind of put us into that area of needing to discuss reading raising funds and then, of course. The last question, the $7 million question. Is, Dare County has not officially agreed to funding the amount that we're proposing in these slides. And we're kind of waiting on, you know, board guidance, I've I've had, you know, some informal discussions. With them about this and so once the board kind of gives us a direction, we can make a more formal request. But that's a big assumption, I just wanted to point out. So i- in general, if we push any of these costs out further in our direction, we're going to need to discuss funding sources and. One thing I want to add that is not in the slide, again, talking to the financial consultants. When I asked them, well, you know, if if we did want to raise some additional revenue, what would that amount need to be? And without, you know, going into the discussion of creating new MSDs or distribution, in general, their answer was 850,000. And at the minimum 400,000, they said anything below that wouldn't really be worth it, but you know, again. Generalizing, the MSD generates about $100,000, so that would be. You know, either eight and a half cents or four cents, depending on which direction you wanted to go and that would be on top of what we already. You know, are are charging and of course, you could also consider a townwide rate raise as well. Now, as we get into looking at the MSDs, you know, those would obviously defray that. So you know, the 850,000, that would be an 8.5 cents increase in the MSDs would become, you know, like a five cent increase, so. That's just something to keep in mind, but you know, as we. Get more direction on how we want to go with MSDs or the taxation of them, they can clearly help us, you know. With those tax rates as well. And another thing of of note was that our debt overlap, assuming again, this was the 1.4 million. Or 1.4 million cubic yard project, the debt overlap doesn't start until fiscal year 23. So we could wait. To raise revenues then, but again, we would still be in a situation where we have. You know, we're still paying for two projects at once. And again. Part of, part of this is if if, you know, the board thinks it's it's worthwhile is getting on board with. The the town, the other towns at some point and and if we do. We we could, we could potentially get on board with them for when they do their next project, so part of this is kind of leveraging us. To be able to get on board with them in 2028. And that would, this, this would bump. Out our next maintenance project to 2028 if we did that 1.47, so that's another consideration. And I don't want to make anybody motion, oh, you can't see my screen. My next, my next page three discusses the MSD timeline. And and this could be adjusted, but the most important thing I think would be is at the February meeting, the board would direct us to prepare. You know, a report and a statement and a and a map and a plan. And so that would be the most important step. And then in the March meeting, we could come back with those items. We need two public hearings and I know and and what I suggested it, they would be May and June, but they can certainly be bumped up to April and May. And that would give us, you know, another month of a buffer if we needed to take some action, so that's just a consideration. And again, page four I'm looking at right now. We are in the process and I know the board is is informed about this, but. We're in the process of obtaining the perpetual eastments. And out of 619 that we have now that we needed, we have 354, so I just wanted to. Give the board the latest numbers that I have heard about. And of course, keeping in mind that we're still paying for debt for the 2019 project. We need to keep that revenue stream consistent now, whether you want to change those tax rates between the north and the south or the townwide. That's perfectly fine, you can do that and, you know, with the next budget ordinance, but we do need to keep this current revenue stream that we have. For the amount of money that we have coming in. Yeah.
The debt for the 2019 project ends when?
That would be in. 20 fiscal year 24, we we would make our last payment in July of 23, so that's fiscal year 24.
Okay, alright, and the other question I had is. We have a payment in 2023, if we do this project, it calls for a year of overlap?
I think two years, yeah, two years.
Two years of overlap? Ooh, okay, that's even worse.
Yeah, it would put us into that kind of range for two years, that the overlap range would be for two years.
And then the debt service for a proposed 22 or 23 project extends out how far?
Well, it would be five years, so. Our first, assuming it's a 2022 project. 27, so that would be five years, so the 23 and 24 would be the two years of the debt overlap.
Okay, alright, I didn't, I wasn't aware that we would have possible two years of overlap, alright, thank you.
Sure. Um. You know, and another consideration too is even if, even if we. Didn't raise taxes for this project and kind of, you know, all the stars aligned perfectly, which they would clearly need to. That would. You know, when we did our next project in 2028, that would just kind of take away that, you know, I feel like it's. Kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul, we we either, you know, kind of save up that money for the next project or we use it for this project, but I think. We have to consider that as well as we would be depleting that fund balance for the. The next project that we did, so that's just, you know, kind of a consideration as well. This just again, page five just talks about the MSDs we already discussed. And Commissioner Fuller discussed the map on page six and I just wanted to point out that. The map on page six corresponds with evaluations on page 10. So again. When he pointed out that the map went to the bypass, that was correct and those valuations also reflect that, however. You know, the changes would be kind of nominal and for discussion purposes, hopefully this could give the board a a better idea of what direction they wanted to in the MSDs. One of my slides, page eight. It kind of summarizes the the last two projects, the percent of total volume by reach. And reach one was 39% and the other reaches were 61% and. Just noting that, you know, generally MSD North and reach one align. So we can make that generally generalization and based on that, based on the current amount of taxes that we're generating, the MSD North. And and this would be between the two MSDs and the townwide, the MSD North pays about 38%. The south 31% and then the townwide breakout is 32%. And then kind of going to pages 11 and 12. I've summarized what David Ryan has already talked about, but like he had said, I'm going to break down a little bit more what that town portion is. In in the FEMA only and CSDM grant only portion. Like he had said, our cash contribution would be about 480,000 and that would just kind of come from our fund balance that we already have. And the the portions that the town would be responsible for would be fencing and sprigging and, you know, our financial consultants, we have to have a bond attorney as well. And any contingency. And again, that FEMA part is about $12 million versus. 8.7 million dollars if we add sand to their project as they're looking at it. The other thing I want to point out is that. Again, that assumption that we I had talked about earlier in that Dare County, we would ask them for $7 million. After the grant and FEMA portion. It proposes a split between the town and the county and that split is about 8.6 million dollars each. Again, I know. Bobby Alton described to us about how the. Excuse me, how the county would be credited for that 1.4 million CSDM grant. So we would ask them for 7 million, the grant portion would be credited to their side of the 1.48, the 1.4 million and then. The financial consultants proposed that we would use 4 million from our fund balance. And then we would issue debt about 4.6 million dollars and that again, that that total town contribution would be 8.6 million. And I think that. That is, that is it for me.
Back up just for a second, did you said your last statement that we would use 4 million in fund balance?
Yes.
Is that undesigned native fund balance, Amy?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I I mean beach nourishment, beach nourishment fund balance from the beach nourishment capital reserve, not not general fund, but beach nourishment. Capital reserve fund balance.
I just wanted to make that clear up.
Yes, I appreciate that.
Any other questions, Amy?
Amy, I do have one more question, if you don't mind. What percentage of the town revenue that we get from ta- the tax rate is the is the oceanfront or ocean side?
Uh, let me look at these slides. As far as what the MSD generates?
No, I'm talking about is a townwide tax rate, what percentage of the ocean side does that, does that play into our general fund?
Well, the the general, just the, just the general proportion, um. Well, the valuation of the north and the south is about 1 billion. The townwide is 3 billion, so is that's about a third.
Okay, that, thank you very much, that was my question.
Hearing no other questions. Greg, where where do we go next in terms of presentation or are we at a discussion point?
I believe you're at discussion point, Mayor, certainly is. I think as David was presenting the alternative one, he talked about. You know, if you spread the sand or the entire reach, it creates very little benefit, but by. Concentrating there where you have the highest erosion rate, that project seems to have a good cost benefit, you end up with about a a three year benefit. And I think the other aspect that of alternative two with that loss of FEMA funding. You don't get the full advantage of the FEMA funding that you do in alternative one. I know the consultant also talked about an alternative to. The the length of the permitting and the bidding could certainly push that alternative out to 2023 because it'd be very tight to get that in 2022. Just knowing that that permitting will take longer in order to get the best bid, you you don't want to get. As those contractors. Get work lined up kind of pretty well in advance, that could very well push that project 2023, so. Think those were just a couple of important considerations as we talked about this staff wise.
Alright, thank you, well, I'll kick off the the board conversation just by. You know, without regard to details and numbers, for me, just philosophically. I like the idea. I like the idea of aligning with the other projects eventually. Um, I'm I'm assuming that if we were able to do that, um, and and that is a little bit of an if, but if we were able to do that, um, the mobilization, the share of the mobilization, demobilization and the cost per yard could be more efficient potentially to us, um, in just painting in a in a larger project, uh, which is, which is beneficial. Um, the the smaller project, I think some of the sand volumes, even even with the scenario that, um, it under either allocation, um, to me doesn't make as much sense as the as the larger project. And then with regard to the financing, um, we, in the long term, and I I'm thinking of this not just about this project. And and I'm expressing my position without regard to just this project is long-term. Whether we tax them now or whether we adjust the tax rates, um, I think we need to to s- better distribute the the revenue stream. So I would personally be in favor of establishing the new districts now. Um, and uh, whether whether we tax them or not, whichever project we decide to to do. Um, uh, uh, it just seems appropriate that we would go ahead and do that. In terms of how deep those are, um, the center line of Wrightsville is almost twelve hundred feet from the ocean. The center line of Memorial is eight hundred and fifteen feet, let's say, from from the ocean. Um, I personally would prefer that there was a logic to aligning our MSDs with, um, with the the ocean influence. And it seems to me that that could be the center line maybe of either one of those streets. Um, and and Wrightsville would make it a lo- a little broader. Um, I'm I'm also, um, think personally that the entire town can and should bear a little bit more of this burden because of the extent to which we all benefit from from the beach and the, um, and the the tourism, uh, revenue. Um, we've, just as an aside, we've talked about approaching the legislature to have them put money in in a fund. Um, you know, I, it's a long shot as whether we would ever be successful with that. So I I will try, but I think we need to be proactive in being self-reliant personally. And, um, although, uh, later today, there is a discussion of the North Carolina League of Municipalities a revi- uh, part legislative priorities for the coming session. Uh, infrastructure is one of those, and beach nourishment is one of the infrastructure items that's in in their priorities. So that does give us a a little bit of an opening to get the league's support uh, for for funding the beach nourishment. Um, and with that, I'll just throw it to the board and and see who wants to weigh in. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll I'll go next. It's gonna be kind of brief. I like what you had talked about, about aligning the projects with the northern towns. I think that could help us share in our prices. I do not like the fact of overlapping, uh, two years of overlap is what Amy said. I I I don't, I don't like that at all. Also do not like the fact that if we do the, if we add sand to the FEMA project, we use, we lose three point three million. Uh, I I I don't like that at all. And, uh, reallocating how much the tax rate is, I think when you look at the South Nag's Head area, the amount of sand that they get, sixty, sixty percent, sixty-one percent. Uh, I think we need to look at that since they have the higher erosion rate. That's my comments at this time.
Good, thank you.
I'll I'll go next. Um, I'm I'm pretty much in a agreement. Um, I think if I want to add anything as far as the, let let's just take the two existing MSDs. If we put the same cubic yard straight down the beach, I'm all for saying that the tax rate in those two MSDs should be the same. I I can, I can agree with that. But if we're taking, let's say, two-thirds of the sand and putting it in the south part and one-third of the sand in the north part, then I think we need to discriminate on how much we're going to charge each of those MSDs. And I would say the one that gets more sand, uh, should pay a higher percent in the tax rate. Am I making sense on that? Um, anyway, uh, I do agree that we need to create an MSD from Bonnet Street North to Eighth Street and another one to either the midsection of Wrightsville or to the bypass. Um. I'm not sure which I think's right. I I I think Memorial is is short. I think the bypass might be a good break. And the reason I say that is because of going back to Ash Wednesday. That tended to be where the break was with the flooding. And I think there's some rational part of making it the bypass. Um, if if not, you're gonna have one person on one side of Wrightsville and one person on the other side of Wrightsville doing the nananana boo-boo thing. Um, the other thing, what Renee said about what is the value of the oceanfront to the town in terms of tax dollars? And now I'm getting to my most important part, which is, I think the townwide rate should be higher. But for me to sell the townwide rate to be higher, I would like to know what the loss is if we lose the oceanfront to people on the west side. People on the west side don't quite get it that we, our tax rates are low in our neighborhoods because of the ocean. And if we don't protect the ocean, our tax rate's gonna go up a hell of a lot more than two and a half cents. So I I would like some rational, basically, Amy, some actuarial type of analysis of tax rates per district. Um, if that makes sense, of course, that begets, um, a lot of assumptions. But basically some sort of cost benefit ratio analysis per district. But I agree, we need to go in and create the districts. I would like to have an actuarial for each district. And I would like to do it instead of just like doing ten cubic yards of sand straight down the beach, that it be based on the amount of sand that the area gets would have a higher tax rate. And I relate that to like, insurance is there to spread the risk among a lot of people. Nobody likes to pay insurance, but we all do it for a particular reason. But insurance doesn't always have to be equal. Using health as an example, you know, somebody that smokes pays a higher insurance rate than somebody that doesn't smoke. And I can note that to like what we have here. Sat Nag's Head has a higher rate of, uh, issue than North Nag's Head. So I don't, I don't have a problem with with manipulating those rates. That's, that's it.
Okay, tha- thanks, Web. Renee or Mike?
Go ahead, Mike.
You had your hand up, Renee.
Nah, I'm I'm good. Go ahead.
Web said everything you needed to say? Uh, Web, Web took care of what you wanted to say?
Nah, I'm, I'm trying, I mean, I I I I intentionally avoided the discussion of what I call the point five or the one point five project. Um, because I had a very specific understanding of which project I thought was better. And now I'm less convinced, um, of where I was yesterday after hearing Amy talk.
Yeah. So, all right, I'll go, Renee. From my standpoint, I'm I'm in favor of aligning with the town to the point that I may. I think we may need to look at having discussions with the towns and to be independent with what Mr. Alton said. And the fact that they're just gonna take the one point four million dollars that we've got, even though they budgeted, they haven't made the modifications to the plan from the original plan that needed to take place. I agree with Web in the fact that our tax rate is is based on, or is lower due to the fact that we do have that beach, but that beach draws the occupancy and that beach draws the sales that create from the tourism that create that, which is the majority of our tax base. If we lose that, yes, we lose the other part and we have to increase our taxes. But at the same time, if we took the benefit to what they did in municipalities that had over nine hundred thousand residents and raised our occupancy tax, or if we increased our sales rate, we wouldn't be talking about such a great um, beach nourishment increase per MSDs. I agree also with the fact that we should probably go on and put these MSDs in place, whether we tax them or not at this point. And I agree with Web's fact that we should do this based on sand placement and locations. That will also, like I mentioned with the Avon property, that will put some people that live in those areas that don't necessarily rent their property, uh, that are on fixed income in a situation. They're gonna have to make a decision whether they stay in that area or not, which is gonna create other issues down the road. Um, some areas that are other coastal communities will actually tax those rentable properties higher for just this reason. Um, they can offset their their costs to the people that are vacationing here. Um, you know, we do make money off of the the tourists and we do make money off of those folks that vacation here, and that is our livelihood. But at the same time, um, the money we make goes right back into bringing them back here next year. So we're spending that money that we're making on on taxation just to to, um, keep the beach nourished, keep their, try to keep our infrastructure up. I I would mention that if, you know, we're gonna sit here and talk about five cents or whatever cents we're gonna talk about. But, um, we've kept for years in the past fighting over one cent when it comes to infrastructure or one cent when it comes to improvement of our overall town. Um, and I understand that the beach is the big part, but at the same time, um, I still think that with COVID, things have shifted. And we're gonna see more use on a longer base than just those six, seven months of the summer. And there are infrastructure issues that need to be addressed. So, you know, MSDs, they're great for certain areas and certain things. But we may look at having to increase taxes overall, just to make all these things fit in the place. If we can't come up with an outside funding source such as getting a penny back on the sales tax um, or pushing for that additional help from the state. Um, and I don't want to rely on the county because we don't know what their plan is, even though they say that their plan's working. So that's, that's my side of it. I I do want to know, uh, from a legality point with John, what is the actual legality of the the county being able to walk in and take a fund that was given to the town based on applications that we we gave them? We we asked for that money or, you know, we applied where we had to. What's the legality of the the county coming in and taking it and and actually giving it to especially a town that maybe doesn't have any beach, public beach access points? Do you have an answer for that?
I don't. I haven't looked into, can you, can y'all hear me? Um, I have not looked into that particular issue. I I I've been in meetings with Bobby where he's discussed that and discussed the rationale for for what they're doing, which he he claims is not really taking the money back. But, um, if you would like, I can look into that. But my guess is, without researching it, my guess is they they probably have the authority to do that. But, but, um, I don't think we're gonna find that it's impermissible, but we can certainly take a look if y'all would like.
I just, it's just a a thought, you know, if you don't have a public beach access, but yet you're gonna nourish the beach, then at what particular point that we take funds from taxpaying citizens, et cetera, and so forth, to nourish a place that there's no accessible points? So it's just a, just an outside thought, but that's kind of where my discussion is. And I look forward to hearing what this Renee has to say.
Well, I'd like to thank David and Brian and Amy for their presentations this morning. Um, I did learn a few more things that I did not know before I came in today. I'm totally in favor of aligning, trying to align our projects with the other communities just for economies of scale costs going forward. I'm totally in favor of adding more MSDs. And I'm probably gonna stake out a position here. I think that, um, reaches two, three, four, and all the subsets um, south of Gulf Stream need to have a higher MSD rate. I think the west side of twelve forty-three needs to go ahead and start being taxed. I'm not going to discuss the rate because I'm not gonna plug that number in. But I think that needs to go ahead and be, um, started and evaluated and added into the beach nourishment money. They have one road in, one road out. They do use the beaches on the west, on the east side as well. So I think that rate needs to be higher. I do think north of Gulf Stream, especially when you get into the neighborhoods from Hollowell Street North where you have a Wrightsville or a Memorial, that those rates do not need to be as high perhaps as the area of twelve forty-three. Looking at the revenue generated, it doesn't generate as much revenue. And I think the tax rates probably don't need to be as extensive, even though it's probably a longer length. It's also an area that receives less sand than south of Gulf Stream. So that's my rationale for them having a lower rate is because they don't get as much sand as well. But I do think we need to evaluate, um, how much money we're gonna charge the areas that receive more sand. I think that needs to be looked at. Um, I have a great concern after what I learned this morning about two overlap years instead of one. I was concerned about one, two just causes me to have more ulcers, I think, um, as we move, as we go forward. So I think we need to figure out how to smooth that out, and that may be revenue from the other MSDs smoothing that out. And that's, I think that's, see for my notes. I do have one concern about the other project is losing the three point three million of FEMA. But if that gets us more into the twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-eight time period, then I might could live a little bit with losing that money. But I'm like, Mike, I'm not sure I understand how we lose our, um, CSDM grants to the county out of their share that, of course, I don't think that we're gonna be able to defend, depend on the Dare County money as we go forward. Because I think that pot of money is just about depleted. And we need to think, meet with the other towns and think long-term how we're gonna pay for beach nourishment if we're all committed to it without having that big pot of money that we had at the beginning.
Okay, alright. Tha- thank you, Renee. Um, so, um, that, I think if we, if we go the route of the larger project that gives us the option of, um, aligning with the other communities, then then that is a set of discussions that really needs to be, uh, kicked off immediately because there there are also efficiencies in terms of engineering and surveying and 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 other things that, you know, may be imminent for those towns that we need to, that we would need to go ahead and and sort of start overlapping with. In terms of, you know, trying to summarize, it it seems pretty clear that, you know, an agenda item for us in February, as Amy, Amy said, that's a critical date, that we do need to direct staff to prepare the the study or the plan for the new MSDs. Uh, I'm not hearing, um, objection to the creation of those, um, regardless of, without regard to, you know, whether they're taxed or how they're taxed. But but it sounds like the board does want to create those MSDs. Um, the one thing I'm not clear there on in terms of my summary is, uh, we're we're talking about creating is we're, we're talking about creating west side districts, the west side of 1243, the west side of 12, probably to the, to the bypass as opposed to one of the intervening streets. It does all have the same character in terms of, you know, the mix and and is it, the one question I do have, is it, is it border to border? Are, are MSDs are going to extend to the north boundary of Nag's Head? Is that the, the board's direction? Renee, you kind of had your hand up there, I think.
Well, I just think we need to make one distinction. It's easy to make a distinction in South Nag's Head because there's only one, there's not a series of roads and it's easy to talk about Riceful and Hollowell, but from Hollowell South, it would have to almost go to the bypass because there's no interior streets. So we need to make sure we have that distinction drawn out when we do any rates or mapping.
Understood. Thank you. What, what about these?
Wait, just let me, let me add as far as going north of Bonnet Street. For those people that do go out and look at the beach and look at beach driving, and this is all anecdotal, I don't, I'm not the engineer, I haven't got measurements, but the bad part of beach driving right now is north of the Nag's Head Pier. And that's the area where we don't even have an MSD. So from a observation standpoint, it looks like they're going to need sand at some point in time in the near future. And I'm all for creating the MSD and doing the preliminary work, whether it's permitting, engineering, et cetera, et cetera. So we'll be ready when we need to do it as opposed to just wait, not create an MSD, then come back later and have to create the MSD, then go through everything. So that's my reasoning for trying to push for Bonnet Street to Eighth Street as an MSD and then also take that to the bypass as a, as a, you know, from NC 12 to the bypass as a separate MSD. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Webb. So, so again, back to the the, the MSD discussion and the agenda item for February. It sounds like that's going to be the direction that we'll be giving staff with the, with the study, which is the creation of these new MSDs as with comments that the board has made today. And again, at, at some point we'll see, we'll see tax rates and talk about revenue, but the direction seems pretty clear that we would create these MSDs. So then the, the, the second question on the design of the project, I think I, other than the concern about the, the cost and the overlap of financing, which the MSDs and revenue may or may not, well, certainly would help to address. And, and that financial concern, I, I guess I'll ask the board and sort of poll the board. Are we, are we, do we have consensus on the larger project as opposed to the smaller project? And I'll go sort of alphabetically here through polling the, the board and ask Commissioner Brinkley.
Yes, but again, the overlapping of the, of the, of the, of the debt service, that, that's my concern with that. But yes, the larger project.
Cuthbert?
I'm in favor of the larger project because I think it has the potential to align us with the other towns. I have a great concern about two years of overlapping because I've already had input from not local people, but some of our property owners north of me that are in a financial squeeze because of COVID, because the revenue that they used to get from down here was not money that they used to support themselves. And now with COVID in their home communities and their home businesses, that revenue from here is being used to support themselves. So I think if you double tax them for two years, they're going to be put in a really financial squeeze that they're already stressing about right now.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
Larger project.
Commissioner Sears?
I'm in favor of the larger project. I would like to know what the other towns are doing in the next year. If, if, you know, the county is going to do Southern Shores next year, what is Kitty Hawk doing anything? And I haven't got a definite answer from my contact there or in KDH. So what's going, you know, what's their plans?
Okay. So, so I would add direction to staff. If you can poll the other towns, whoever in those towns is in charge of beach nourishment, perhaps David is the right contact person to reach out to them and figure out where they are and their processes and be able to report, to report that back to us. And with regard to, it sounds like and, and I trust that official action perhaps in terms of a vote rather than today could be at the February meeting to direct the consultants to proceed with the larger project. I'm open to whether we need to vote on that today or not, but the, the other question I, I think would be for Amy in terms of hearing this concern about the overlap is, you know, the, the tax rates and the MSDs can obviously vary from year to year. And we do that in, in May and June when we set those rates. And if we have two years of overlap, what does that look like with new MSDs to relieve the burden? So it's not, you know, a shock to the system of those oceanfront property owners that Renee was just speaking of. You know, what, at least for a two-year window with overlap, what do those tax rates look like so that we can make it a little more comfortable for everybody involved?
Mayor, I would add one thing if I might.
Yes, ma'am.
To have Amy take a look at, in light of what I've heard out of other board members about adjusting based on volume, what an increase in south of Gulf Stream would look like as well.
Well, if we, like I said, if, if we did incorporate the, the new MSDs, and I just, I want to say one more thing too, is that again, this kind of assumes that we're going to do, assuming we're going to do the larger project, that the construction is in 22. If for some reason we weren't able to make that timeline and it got bumped to 23 for cost purposes, then that debt would also be pushed back one more year to 24. So when I say that there's two years of overlap, that's assuming that project's going to get done in 23. Does that make sense? So if, if the project gets pushed back a year, then that debt will also get pushed back. Cause we're not going to pay debt on a project that we're not, you know, hasn't started yet. So I just wanted to clarify that point. If that was okay. Okay, great. And so again, the, the consultants thought we would be okay with, with not raising taxes. If the board did want to raise taxes, their suggestion was, you know, either 850,000 or 400,000. And again, assuming that the generalizing that 100,000 is what the current MSDs generate, that would be an extra eight and a half cents if it was, you know, evenly distributed. Or if we incorporated the, the new MSDs, it would be 5.1 cents. And again, you know, this doesn't include Bonnet North. I just wanted to clarify that as well as that the project would not, just for the people listening, the project wouldn't go north of Bonnet. And even if we would create those MSDs, those valuations aren't included in these numbers. So I just wanted to clarify that as well. And then if we did the $400,000 project, again, that would be four cents evenly distributed in the current MSDs. Or about 2.4 cents if we incorporated the new MSDs. And again, that would just be Bonnet South. So that's kind of what I came up with based on those two scenarios.
Thank you. That, that's helpful.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, if I could pass along some information regarding the Northern Beach Projects. I was able to attend a, a meeting last week where they gave some project updates and where they currently are in that process. The Northern Beach Projects, which would include Kill Lava Hills, Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores and the Town of Duck, they are currently about two-thirds of the way through their permitting process. And they are progressing parallel with us on as far as the FEMA review. They anticipate they'll have everything in hand in the June, July timeframe, at which point they will go ahead and put the project out to bid for a summer of 2022 construction window. Additionally, Buxton has, is in the process of permitting. They have a FEMA plus a maintenance project, which they are looking at a 2022 project window. And they, there's also another project, which is the Avon Project, which they are currently looking at. And they're looking at three different options, an emergency option, a five-year option and a 10-year option. That emergency option would try to do a minimal level of work in summer of 2022. Try to do a joint project with, with Buxton. And so each one of these projects in these surrounding municipalities are looking at a 2022 window. So as, as we evaluate where we are in the process, we're trying to get some efficiencies. I think we have a better sense that we could achieve that with a smaller project. The larger project, as Brian had noted, there are, you know, some variables and that could push it out to 2023. There is a point that I want to make that may not have been clear in the, the presentation. Is as we evaluated the cost to the benefit for the two projects, that for the smaller project, that with that addition of 567,000 cubic yards of sand, that the benefit would be the longevity. And in one of the options that Brian had presented, that if we concentrate that in the south and reaches two, three and four, we could extend the project somewhere between a year and a half to two years. And the town contribution would be the $480,000 for that option. As compared to the larger project, which would look at a townwide project and would be able to extend the project three years. And the overall cost to the town, as Amy had noted, was about 8.6 million dollars, but would rely on a $7 million county contribution to that. So with all of that being said, I think with the smaller project, we could get to 2027 if the erosion rate is, stays as per the rate that we have noted in our presentation. With the larger project, we extend out to 2028. Where it's not quite defined yet as to the Northern Beach Projects, whether it's going to be a 27 or 28. But each one of the projects, whether they're small or large, is going to get their closest to that window. So I, I just wanted to pass that along if that was not clear in the presentation.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
David, you may have asked, answered the question that I did not ask earlier, which was from an engineering standpoint, which would be to make the most sense to the town financially as well as longevity wise. And I think you just answered that, that for an amount of money to do the smaller project versus the amount of money to do the larger project, the results are not going to, and longevity are not going to be hugely different.
That is correct, but the caveat to that is when looking at those options, which provide the greatest benefit for that smaller project, it would then omit the placement of sand in Reach One.
Yeah, the sand goes to the south.
That's correct.
Thank you.
David, would you feel that with the three, the four communities to the north putting sand on in, in 2022, that you would have some drifting sand that would hit Reach One?
I would really have to defer to Brian on, on that one as far as that longshore transport of sand and the time period that we could potentially expect that. Brian, can you weigh in?
I'll try. I don't know that it'll be a simple, a simple answer. Yeah, in general, I think we, we could see some sand move from the north to the south toward the town from the northern beaches. But just from what we've seen so far, some of our modeling and analysis, it's not, it's not a consistent always north to south movement. It's not, certainly not consistent in amount year to year. There does seem to be some reversals with transport from the south toward the north, somewhere in the northern part of Nag's Head, just north of the town. So it could happen, but I can't say that it definitely will in any given year, any given set of years. It may or may not. Not a very direct answer, but that's just what we're seeing from the numbers in the, in the, in the previous data.
Well, with the numbers in the previous data, do you see that if the northern beaches all do this in 2022 and because of the length or the size of the project, we get pushed to 2023, do you see that the currents coming off of that beach nourishment or replenishment to the north of us could cause a quicker erosion rate in our southern beaches? Did you see that with the last nourishment? Basically when they did their nourishment, or do you have the records going back far enough that the year after they did their nourishment, did we increase in our erosion rate in the south?
I haven't looked at that specifically. I can go do that, but I don't just, I, I don't think that nourishment in the north, adding sand in the north, north of the town up in Kill Lava Hills, Kitty Hawk and elsewhere. I don't see that increasing erosion in Nag's Head. I'm trying to think of the process that would do that. I just, right now, I don't, I don't think that would happen.
The original beach nourishment engineers stated that anytime you add anything into the ocean to the north, you create a different, kind of like coming around the river bend churn to it, which will change what happens to the south of it. And I think overall, I'll speak for myself, we all want to see us join in with the northern region and that's the functionality of trying to get to that point. You know, cost-wise, it's much better to do the smaller project. And what David just mentioned, it's much better to do the smaller project if we have any hopes of getting in 2022 based on the timeframe and where we stand in that timeframe. But those, the two questions I ask would be questions that and the fact we didn't have any storms last year, which statistically proves we're probably going to have more storms this year, would probably lend us to, to think that even if we got into 2023, then that project would be kind of a year behind at that point.
Right. I appreciate your question. We'll go look into that. What we saw last time, the board would announce or something, see if there's data in, in Nag's Head to really take a look at that.
So let me ask board and, and staff and looking forward to actions at the February meeting. Have we had the discussion that we need to have today? I'll, I'll ask the, the board that as well.
Having trouble turning my unmute. Yeah, I think you gave pretty clear direction on, from project and MSD. So unless, unless there's some other thoughts that you want us to capture here in the final closing.
Board, any further input?
Thank you, David, for sharing what your, the realistic picture is. So I thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to, to thank staff for being prepared for today. You know, you gave us a, I, I think you gave us a really nice, clear picture of the scenarios and on the board's behalf, I really appreciate that. Is there any other? Is there any other business that the board needs to consider at this time? Hearing none? Are we finished with our workshop? Webb, I see the top of your head, but if you're speaking, you're muted.
I, I'm, I'm meant to be muted.
Okay. All right. All right. Very good. In, in that case, hearing no further business and hearing that staff has the direction that it needs, then I think a motion to adjourn would be in order. Did I hear a second from you, Mike?
Sure.
I thought I heard one from somebody. All right. Madam Clerk, then if you'll poll the board for adjournment, please.
Yes. Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.
Thank you.